Good evening, everybody. Here we are bearing down on Christmas, happy to be in the room together. We'll try not to keep you at the table too long tonight, but welcome. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Treasurer Devarti.
Devarti, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Landau.
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? And support? And we have support. Is there any discussion on the agenda? If not, all in favor say aye. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Tab A in our packet tonight is approval of the minutes, which you have in front of you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the November 15th, 2022 retreat and monthly meeting submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
We approve the minutes.
Is there any discussion? Seems to me that the line of the minutes, that trustee Devarti's name got misspelled. Taken, that might be one correction. At least a permanent record. Having said that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you. Citizen participation, WCC Education Association. I'll call Ms. Kissel to the microphone, please. Welcome.
Hello. Well, it is December 2022, the end of another term, and it is most definitely time for a break. The membership was very pleased with the news of the 1% increase. It was unexpected, but very welcome news, and I have worked with HR to finalize the needed paperwork, and it is all set. So, thank you. Regarding grievances, there is one issue that was sent to arbitration, but it is currently in abeyance as both sides await more information, and there are no additional grievances at this time. The WCCEA also continues to use contract implementation meetings to work on updates for the adjunct lists, clarity around professional development and evaluation, scheduling concerns, and time on campus. Working with VPI Vega, we will continue to manage staffing issues across campus, and we recognize that hiring and retention will be part of our regular discussions. This past week, though, has been a sad one for many of us with the passing of recently retired biology faculty Ross Strayer. I had the joy of being the same office pod as Ross for 19 years. He was generous in so many ways. He happily loaned both of my sons one of his guitars when they took classes here, and he was never without a joke or a smile. In planning for tonight's remarks, I was struck by a song posted to YouTube years ago that highlights Ross's musical talents. This particular song is sung by Lisa Eddy, in which Ross wrote the music and played guitar. The song is called, and I'm not kidding, "When I'm Dead," and it encapsulates so much of who Ross was. In it, she sings, "I plan to live eternally in the stories you all tell," and this is exactly what has been happening since we learned of his passing. And indeed, Ross will live eternally in the stories that we do tell, and I know my colleagues are already working to make sure Ross's love of biology, of teaching, of sparking curiosity in the natural world is not lost. So, as the semester ends, and as we all look to connect with family and friends, and as we embrace the winter solstice, knowing the sun will shine again, I wish you all peace. Enjoy.
Thank you. Any public comments in the House tonight? Come forward. Seeing none. Vanessa, were there any written comments? It's either. Moving along to monthly reports. Yeah, being in the packet tonight are personnel recommendations. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Support? Is there any discussion on the personnel recommendations? Diane?
Mr. Chair, I would like to say congratulations on the people who are leaving this institution after a lengthy years that they've been here, and I think I commend them for that very much. But I figured it out like you probably did, too. Fifty-nine years total, and I think that's very, very good. I'm glad to see this. I do want to say something about one person that I know very, very well for many, many years, and that's Jeffrey Shoemaker. He was always kind and supportive. I don't know about his work, but I do know that I've heard always good things about him from the past. I was introduced to him when I got, after I got here, and I've known his sister from Washtenaw County, and she was a beautiful person also. So, I just wish all of these people good luck in their new adventure.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trustee Hatcher.
I have fond memories of Jeffrey as well, but I'm not sure, Linda Blakey could answer this question, whether we can have graduation without Lily. When I was, I guess I was president of the union, and she would call me and bug me for every day. Who's the faculty speaker? Who's the faculty speaker? And I had to come up with the faculty speaker, and Lily just called. I could see on who she was calling, and I'd leave the office. But she was persistent because she knew that had to happen, and she ran the graduation so beautifully. So, I hope we can have a graduation.
Well, trustee Hatcher, may I speak for a moment?
Please.
We can't answer any of your questions tonight because Linda Blakey is not here.
Oh. My vote's over there. I can go home.
We hope you'll stay with us tonight, trustee Hatcher.
Yeah, Lily has helped with graduation for so many years and been so helpful. The other question I have is, is it true that we have four vacancies in public safety and public service? Is that true? Four people, four?
I believe it is true. Again, that is, yes.
Yeah. That's not good. I'm just saying it's, you know, when we, we need, if we need those people, it's, it's we need to replace them, I think, as soon as possible.
We do have them posted, correct? Chris Mahaly.
Yes, correct. They are posted, and we are actively recruiting to find people in a very tough-to-fill industry right now, but that's a priority.
Sure. Yeah, well, the whole, everything is tough to fill, but yeah. Thank you. That's all.
Any other comments? Motion on the table? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Carries, thank you. Tab C, financial reports for November 2022. Ask VP Barnes if he can come forward and help us understand what we're looking at.
Okay. I'll start by giving you an update of how we're doing for the winter semester. The, right now, we're down about 2.3% in credit hours as of the end of November. That compares with a budget of being down 5.1%. So, we are down, but not down as much as we had expected in the budget, which means financially, it's a positive trend so far. If we continue on this trajectory, I would say we'll end the semester, financially, about $400,000 favorable for the winter semester, but hopefully it will get better because we're not satisfied with being down by 2.3%. In terms of the other revenues, local property taxes, you'll see a variance there of 1.7 million favorable. I've mentioned before, I expect about 1.2 million of that to be permanent. The rest of that is just timing. We've received some taxes a little earlier than we thought. In terms of state appropriations, I would expect that $300,000 to be $500,000 toward the end of the year, perhaps a little more. It's related to the personal property taxes that have been favorable so far. The trade partnerships, that's a little bit favorable simply because we were a little conservative with our summer expectations for the UA, but they came in quite a bit better than expected as well. And finally, I'll mention the investment income. I've mentioned every month, interest rates are high. This will continue to improve each and every month. I would expect by the end of the year, we'll be at least $900,000 favorable from interest income. So, in total there, you see about $4.5 million favorable. I would expect that to stick. From where I'm sitting here today, I would expect that to stick through the end of the year. Looking at total expenditures, you'll see that it's up by about $4 million. I would say roughly a million of that is timing. The rest of that has the potential to stick. It just depends. Some of it is going to be permanent, you know, due to vacancies and so forth, but others we just haven't spent, but we may not end up spending it. Going all the way down, you'll see the total variance revenue over expenditures is about 7.4. As I sit here today, I would say we're looking at between 6.5 and 7.5 at the end of the year from where I sit here today. Things can change, of course, and the one pending issue that's not here is the sanitary pipe. Obviously, whenever that comes, we'll be coming back to the board asking for a transfer to the capital fund or the deferred maintenance fund to fix that. So, that's not here right now, so that would be a variance. I don't always talk about this sheet, but I thought tonight I would show you the capital fund briefly because there's a motion later that's related to the emergency repair of the sanitary pipe. So, that emergency repair has cost us, or is costing us about $284,000, you'll see later. So, that is depleting our campus repair and maintenance fund. So, what we're suggesting, and I'm going to point out here, if you look toward the bottom of the sheet, there's several completed or inactive projects, and there's $127,000 there that's just leftover money from those projects that are just remaining in this fund. And then up toward the top, there's a line called miscellaneous revenue of approximately $18,000. We're going to, you'll see a motion later. I just wanted to point it out on this form, but we're going to, you'll see a motion later to transfer that money from the capital fund to the campus repair and maintenance fund to partially replenish it. So, I'll show you that later, but I wanted to point it out here so you know where those numbers came from.
Thank you. Any questions? Any of the trustees? Thank you. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for November 2022 as follows. General fund, capital fund, combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion?
I move we receive these reports.
Support? And we have support. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Carries, thank you. Facilities development report is tab D in our packets tonight, and VP Beschi is standing by to further describe that for us, please.
Good evening. Give an update on the facility development report for the month of December. There are no active capital projects currently underway to report on, so I'll move right into deferred maintenance. As of the end of November, we have a remaining uncommitted fund balance of just over $855,000. Touch on a few of the current deferred maintenance projects that are going on starting this month or into this year. Campus-wide lighting upgrade, about 70% of the LA building is complete with that LED upgrade. Over the month of December, we're going to move into the OE building and start doing classrooms as part of the upgrade while they're doing floor repairs on the first and third floor of the LA building, and then we'll get back into LA after that. The public safety UPS installation project is complete. UPS, for those who've never heard it, stands for uninterrupted power supply, which is just a fancy name for battery. So, it's the last component that needed to be put in for the public safety for their emergency power setup, and that project was wrapped up last weekend. As I mentioned earlier, the flooring in the LA building, first and second, or first and third floors began in December and right after the 20th, when grades are due out of this month, a lot of work will begin in both the first and third floor of that project. Parking structure maintenance is going to go up to bid in early January and hopefully get the prices back in February, March, and get that project scheduled for late spring kickoff. And then, the EV charging design replacement, we've talked about it, but I just wanted to touch on it one more time. It's a three-part project. Part one is a replacement of three existing outdated stations in the parking structure that we're going to replace with six level-two EV charging stations. And then, it's two design projects. The design for charging stations in the car barn, which will include two level-twos and two DC fast charging stations, and then a large-scale centralized plan for upwards of 50, the infrastructure to be put into level lot four for upwards of 50 charging stations for future growth and anticipated need for charging stations. So, just highlighting a few of the deferred maintenance projects. Moving on to the campus repairs and maintenance update, as VP Barnes mentioned, we, as of the end of November, have a, pretty much depleted our current balance in the campus repairs and maintenance because of a project we opened up for the repair, the temporary repair of the sanitary project. Last month, we talked about the rental, the bypass pipe system, and the second part of that, which we talked about, what those prices are coming in and we're now in the process of, is a winterization for that pipe system, and I'm going to just begin with a slide presentation. You can see the pump, the primary of the bypass system involved, you know, 100 feet of piping and two pumps. We built an enclosure around it primarily for safety, just so we could lock it and keep vandals and folks away from tampering with the pumps. It's also going to serve as a secondary source of sound control and attenuation, so it'll soundproofing. But there's a photo of the shelter that was built. You can see this is a section of the piping that runs from the pump station in community park out to the gravity manhole station at the corner of East Huron Drive. The pipe crosses over the roadway in two sections. We built two ramps. There's a large number of students that communicate or use this walkway daily to get from campus over to the Landau Building for classes, so two ramps were constructed as part of this project. You'll see in this photo, aside, alongside the eight-inch bypass is that gray plastic conduit piping. You'll see the, the power, just to energize this heat trace, was fairly substantial. Four 30-amp circuits, 150-amp panel, there was a major amount of work that needed to be done just to run temporary power to energize what we call a heat trace system. You can see the conduit that was installed this week. Along the 100, or along the 1,000-foot section of pipe are four control panels that modulate the temperature of the heat trace. There's a photograph of a control panel along with the conduit, and that conduit at a 90-degree that's running off to the left actually runs to a brand-new 150-amp panel that we put on the side of the SRB building. So, all of this played into the winterization. The heat tape for the heat trace that we had to purchase from out of state and get here, the conduit to energize it, the panel to energize that, that power, and then there's actually an insulation blanket that's going to go on top of the pipe once we put the heat trace product down. But point is, the winterization for the bypass system was very involved, and those prices rolled in over the course of the last couple of weeks. Finally, just real quickly, I'll give you an update on the, on the permanent solution for the permanent sanitary main replacement. The engineering proposal, RFP, came back this week. We kicked that design off this week. It's about eight weeks, so by the end of February, we should have our engineering design for the permanent system, go out to bid. Hopefully, if we don't make the March, we'll be here at the April Board with the total price for that replacement. Anticipated construction start date of May 1st, and an anticipated completion of midsummer, hopefully July, mid-July. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, the campus-wide restroom renovations, number four on the first page. You mean the whole thing, but I'm, I was just a little concerned, a little bit, just a little bit, about a restroom, is that when you walk in from the dock area into, there's that restroom there, it looks so bleak, and I'm just wondering if you're going to do something with it.
It will, it will be on the list. That particular project listed in four is a restroom design for restrooms in the student center, and that's out to bid and will be hopefully completed or started this year. There's, there's a rolling project for floor replacement and restroom upgrades, and on the list will be those restrooms on the student center that you're referring to.
Oh, great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I have one more thing. I thought it was one more thing. I think that's it. I think that was it. Thank you.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Trustee Devarti.
I have a follow-up question. So, if those are restrooms that we're working on are in the student center, and isn't the student center the building that we're out potentially for the large state grant? Is, is it wise, are we going to have to redo these again if we get that state grant? Is that going to be a...
No. No, we would not. So, in the Center for Success, $23 million proposal with the capital A, that renovates a lot of the space within the student center, mainly for, you know, coaching and financial aid and helping these students with success. But no, the, this particular design for the bathroom is anticipation, we would build off of that design with this renovation, so there would be no need to go back and redo that. It would not be a sunk cost.
Questions at the table? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point in our agenda, I would welcome comments from members of the Board of Trustees. Are there any comments this evening? Trustee Landau.
Yes, I recently shared with my colleagues, and now I am sharing with everyone, my intention to resign from the board effective January 1, 2023. I came to this decision after another decision, which I made a few months ago, that I would not run in 2024, and it occurred to me that I've had a 22-year run on this board and that it's time to give somebody else a couple of years' chance to contribute to this institution. I know there are a number of people out there who would like to do that, and I want to allow folks to have that opportunity. It's been my privilege to serve on this board with everyone here. I was just waxing a little bit as I was looking to this. When Diana and I started, we were meeting in that little room in the student center building near Rose's office with about half as many people, maybe a quarter as many people sitting in attendance, and we did not have any of these fancy PowerPoint things, and we didn't have, in fact, I just realized I didn't have an iPhone in my pocket when I started this. So, I leave this board after 22 years, knowing that I'm leaving it in the best care that I could envision. It's been my privilege to serve with each and every member of this board, and I frankly couldn't have made this decision if I didn't have the utmost confidence that all of you can match and surpass anything that I could possibly do, and also give the, an opportunity for a little bit of new blood on the board, which is always, I think, a good thing. I also just want to thank Rose and her amazing executive leadership team. What an incredible group of people, and what an amazing institution you've all helped build here. Also, the faculty and the staff, what an amazing group of people, and how much do they contribute to the well-being of all of these students every day, and I'm in their debt for all the hard work that you and all of them have done. And so, this will be my last board meeting, and I look forward, you know how to reach me, you know, if you have a question.
Speed dial.
I doubt it'll be necessary, but at any rate, thank you very much for this opportunity, and it's been my pleasure to serve on this board.
Thank you.
President Blanca.
Well, I just think we should stand and applaud.
Do we have a 22-year pin?
Yeah, we do. It's too big to bring in here. It's, the diamonds are quite heavy. But may I say a few words?
Please.
President, trustee Landau, it's bittersweet that I even say these words. I personally want to thank you for your leadership, for being a mentor to me since the day I arrived, and always being available to give good advice while at the same time allowing me, as well as my colleagues, to make decisions, and I really appreciate that. I also appreciate that you really care. You care about this community, and you always cared about these students, and you care about the employees, and that always came through in all of our conversations. So, it's very, very difficult for all of us to say goodbye, but not goodbye, but, you know, to let you go out of that chair. It's very, very difficult. So, you've been on the board since 2001, and you've been re-elected twice, and you've been our representative on the WTMC board, which we all know has done well and is an asset to this college. Actually, you were part of, weren't you, you and Diana, here when you initiated it? Didn't you work, you probably worked with Gunder?
Yeah.
And you worked with Larry, and now with me. So, thank you. We have a token here for you. May I do this now?
You have the floor, ma'am.
Will you send my name? This doesn't mean goodbye. This does not mean that you don't have to come back.
I don't want.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I open it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Oh, man. Putting me on the spot with my fine motor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No.
Hold on.
Indian packaging.
Yeah.
You have to come back.
All right, we're going to rip.
Okay.
There we go.
Ow! Ow!
Do not open before...
Thank you. Oh, my goodness. So this is for Henry, too. Thank you.
It's nice to mention Henry's name. I knew him, too, and it was my pleasure to get to know you, following the relationship with him, and what an honor to be at the table with you. We may want to continue to send agendas to you for future meetings, just to keep you apprised. But thank you, Rick. Any other trustee comments this evening? Thank you. Trustee McNamara Morton?
Oh.
You've got the floor. Go ahead.
Nope, I'm fine.
Okay. Bill, do you have more remarks, President Blanca?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Thank you. Well, now that we have a board vacancy, it's a reminder of what will happen next. People are probably wondering what happens next in the process, and of course, I've spoke with our attorney, Larry, and Barkoff, and board chair. As per board bylaws, I'm reading this, a posting will soon appear on the college's website soliciting applications from registered Wasna County voters who have an interest in applying to fill the vacancy created by Trustee Landau's resignation. The application period will run through the month of December, and a special meeting of the Board of Trustees will be called in early January for the purposes of choosing a replacement trustee. This trustee will serve out the remainder of Trustee Landau's term, which expires December 31 of 2024. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I think that procedure is established. It's clear, and we look forward to a special meeting on January 3, when we can attempt to find a successor to Trustee Landau.
Is it the 3rd?
That would be January 3.
January 3, yes.
I'm going to be driving back from up north, probably, that day. Is it an evening meeting?
Are you asking if we need you or if you changed the date on your question?
I'm just wondering what time of the day that is, because I had planned to be driving back from up north.
Six o'clock meeting is what is penciled in. Would that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? We've got a procedure, and we will proceed. Thank you all very much. Moving to old business, Tab E in the agenda tonight. 2022 Emeritus Staff Status Recipients. It's an action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees grant the retirees Emeritus Staff status as stated in Board Policy 5045, Policy on Emeritus Staff, as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
And there's support. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNamara.
Yes.
Recommendation is approved. Thank you. New business. For discussion, Siemens One-Year Service Agreement. It's Tab F, and VP Beschi can share some additional thinking on this for us, please.
Good evening. For discussion is a one-year service agreement with Siemens. Siemens has partnered with WCC and is a provider for building automation and the associated HVAC work. Included in this one-year service agreement would be the replacement of four existing control panels. It's the last four that are in need of upgrade. They provide, as part of this contract agreement, 24/7 emergency response, over 700 hours of service hours for commissioning and associated HVAC service work each month, in addition, along with software upgrades and training. Siemens is a sole-source provider for HVAC automation and associated HVAC work. Total cost for this one-year agreement, including all costs for panel updates and recommissioning, is $196,908. Any questions?
Trustee Hatcher.
How many panels were redone? These are the last four?
So we just finished a three-year contract with Siemens, and they replaced four, roughly four each year. So there's, there will be a total of 16 as a result, and then...
That's the end.
This would be the end. These are the last panels that need to be upgraded. Correct.
Trustee McNamara Morton?
Well, my question was answered, because I was, my question was, well, how often would they need to be replaced? So you answered that.
Are you talking on the control panel?
Right.
I mean, the existing panels are probably 20-plus years old, so it's really, the panels, as the software and the technology within Siemens changes, the panels become antiquated or no longer in service, so to say they have a useful life probably would be 15 to 20 years.
Oh, okay. And so, okay, you answered my question.
You called them a sole-source provider. Does that mean that there are no other companies that provide these services?
That is correct. So in certain, in the case of building automations, you really want to partner with one company, not have two or three different companies involved with that type of work.
You don't go out for competitive bids at any point?
We have, yeah. I mean, they, I mean, we have in the past gone out for competitive, and that's, they were awarded based on that, and now we've partnered with them and have their system in place, so they are a sole-source provider at this point.
Any other questions, trustees? Great, thank you. Tab G, Larry Whitworth Occupational Education Building HVAC Upgrades. Again, we'll turn to VP Beschi.
So for discussion is the upgrade of the mechanical scope of work to upgrade and replace mechanical equipment within the welding labs of the OE building. Included in this scope of work is replacement of 10 existing unit heaters, two makeup air units that work in conjunction with the exhaust systems, and then one new exhaust fan. The existing equipment, the unit heaters were put in in roughly 1982, and the makeup air units were put in in roughly 1998, so all of this equipment is old and need a replacement.
Are there any questions on that? Trustee Hatcher?
I'm assuming that Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company is a union shop?
I couldn't hear that.
Is it a union shop?
Yes. So three, three bidders, the low bidder on this job was Monroe Plumbing out of Monroe, Michigan. There was three bidders that applied, all of them participate with an apprentice program, so they all provide or work with union labor.
Were you surprised to see a $100,000 swing between those three bids? Between those three bids, there's a $100,000 swing.
There was quite a gap, so in looking at the bids, the labor between the three bids were all very comparable. The swing was on the material side, so from the best we can determine, Monroe Plumbing is not only self-performed, but they have quite a bit of in-house equipment that they don't have to rent versus the other two contractors that had to go out and have a substantial amount of costs outside of what Monroe had. But there was a relatively big swing between the high and low.
Good, you got your finger on it. That's good. Trustee DeVarty?
So I notice on the comparison of the bidders, there's also a Category A electrical, and that's not before us. Is that separate from what we're considering tonight, and have we selected a contractor for that?
So that contract was under $50,000. We put that in our report, but it's not...
Oh, that's in the report.
But, yeah, so the electrical portion of this HVAC work was below $50,000.
And who was awarded that?
Harper.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We have an action item now. It's Tab H, referenced earlier by VP Barnes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the transfer of $145,067 from the Capital Fund to the Campus Repair and Maintenance Fund to allow the college to continue to fund ongoing campus repair and maintenance projects. The transfer will have no impact on the general fund. Do I hear a motion? And is there support? Is there any discussion before VP Barnes leaves us? Any discussion? Any, everybody?
I just want to say, we need to do this. I think this is a sound thing to take these leftover funds that already exist in our funding and reallocate them to this project, which is, you know, an emergency situation, and I hope we all unanimously support this.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McNamara.
Yes.
Recommendation is approved. Thank you. And at this point, I would like to call for adjournment of this historic meeting of the Board of Trustees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone.